councillors please make sure that your cards are pushed into the slot at the back of the unit and that you speak directly into the microphone. Before we move on to the main items of business I'd like to introduce the officers on the table in front of me especially for the benefit of the public gallery. Furthest away from me is Lewis Jones our planning lawyer, next to him is Steve Weaver the acting development manager, Chris French principal planner, Catherine Pearson area team leader and Alex English planning officer. So, welcome everybody. So, move on to the items of business. Minutes of the last meeting have been on the table here for the last 30 minutes, are you happy that I sign them as a true record?
Really.
Thank you very much. Any apologies for absence Amy?
Thank you chairman, apologies from councillor Hunter.
Thank you. Any declarations of interest?
Thank you chairman, councillor Follows has declared a non-perpetual interest in item B2 as he lives close to the site.
Thank you. Anybody on the committee wish to declare any further interests? No, jolly good. So, Steve could I ask you for any relevant updates to government guidance or legislation since our last meeting?
Thank you chairman, no nothing specific to report other than the consultation on the national planning policy framework is still open for views until May, so if members want to partake.
Thank you. And would you like to give us the latest figures of performance against government targets?
Yes, thank you chairman, thank you members. Firstly, an apology on my part, the data that was circulated within your agenda papers was the end of calendar year data rather than the end of the financial year data. There is, there is an update sheet that's been set out which hopefully everybody's got a copy of. If I quickly take you to that, it's an item for noting. Firstly, in terms of the planning services performance on speed, you can see in relation to the major applications that against a target of 60% set by national government, we've actually achieved in excess of 97% for the last financial year, which is excellent. And for the non-majors as well, against a target of 70%, in excess of 98%. So, the performance as you can see is, is, is well above government targets, reflects an awful lot of hard work on behalf of the team and, and I think they are to be congratulated in that regard. Turning to performance in relation to quality, so that's the one in terms of the number of appeals that are allowed as a proportion of the total number of applications in those categories. If I start with the non-major cases, the threshold we're trying to keep below there is 10% and you can see that for the, the year just gone, we're down at 1.58%, so well below and I would be very, very surprised if, if we started even beginning to approach 10%. The quality criteria on major decisions, that as you all know is something that has been of more concern, but I'm pleased to report that we've had a, a sequence of appeal decisions in the council's favour come through in the last few weeks. That really reflects the primacy of the local plan, now we've got that in place and also the Farnham neighbourhood plan where that affects those decisions. So, performance for the assessment period that the government would test us on is currently at 8.8%, so again nicely below the 10% threshold and that's come down since the last time we reported figures to you. And for the year just gone, 8.96%, so again that, that's within the, the threshold period. And I think going forwards we can be increasingly confident with a strong local plan position that the majors' performance will, will be maintained at a, a below threshold level. Thank you chairman.
Thank you Steve, very encouraging. Just to note that should site inspections be considered necessary as a result of the consideration of the applications at this meeting, these will be held on Monday the 21st of May this year at a time to be agreed at the meeting. So if we move on to the main items to be considered this evening, item A1 is planning application reference WA oblique 2017 oblique 1474 and the proposal is the erection of a two-storey rear extension and a second floor and roof extension to the existing building to provide 19 dwellings together with alterations to elevations and associated works. The proposed drawings show an additional 26 dwellings which do not form part of this, this application at Standard House Wayside Park, Catersall Lane, Godalming and Chris is going to introduce this application to us, thank you.
Thank you chairman, there are no updates since the writing of the report, so I'll run through the details of the, of the application. This is the location plan for the, for the site. Standard House is located to the north of Catersall Lane and is set back by approximately 23 metres from the road frontage. The site is part of the Wayside, part of Wayside Park which was originally an office development and now comprises of a mixture of offices and residential uses. Notably North Brook House to, to the north here at the rear of the site and Panda House further to the east have both been converted to residential following prior approval applications. The distance of separation between the application property and Riverview House is approximately 34 metres, this distance here, and the distance between Huxley House and the application property is approximately 11 metres here. This is the site plan, the plan shows 62 parking spaces retained for the, for the new use. And the two-storey extension which is proposed is, is here on the plan at the rear, you can see a bike, bike store here, cycle store and further to the, to the south is the, is a new bin store for the, for the new use. The separation distance between the application property and Thornbrook House to the rear is approximately 12 metres. This plan shows the amenity space provision, you've got a central communal amenity area between the, between the building and some private amenity spaces for the ground floor flats on either side. The application also proposes balconies to the first and second floor. These are the proposed front elevations and the, sorry the proposed front elevations, you've got the existing on, on the top there and then the proposed just below. The ridge heights would, would increase from approximately 9.8 metres to approximately 13.5 metres. The, the central entrance would be retained and the proposal, you can see the, the balconies at first and second floor level there. These are the existing and proposed side elevations, as you can see there'd be dormer windows within the roof space which would provide space for the accommodation at that And here we have the existing and proposed rear elevations, on, if you look on the rear elevation at the bottom, at the bottom right there is the, is the two-storey rear addition. And this is the proposed, and the proposed ground and first floor plans, the area in green and blue is the area of extension on, at that level and the, the rest of the accommodation which is, which isn't shaded in is the prior approval consent that already exists for the 26 units. These are the proposed second floor and third floor plans and you can see the balconies to the, to these second floor units and the dormer window spaces to, within the, within the roof space. This is Thornbrook House which is to the north of the application site, it's a consent which has been granted for, for a second and third floor at the, the property at the rear, just to provide some context. And here we have the site photographs, on the, on the left at the top is photograph A which is taken from Catersall Lane, the Standard House is the, is the property on the right of that photograph. And on the bottom right photograph B, that's taken from the rear of the site looking towards, towards the rear of the application building and the front or, or the, the adjoining part of Thornbrook, Thornbrook House there. This is taken, we've got photograph A at the top which is a view of the rear of the application property, that's where the proposed two-storey rear extension would, would be located. And photograph B at the bottom is taken looking back from Thornbrook House towards the application This slide splits the considerations into matters of principle and technical opinion and matters of judgment. On the left-hand side we have matters of principle and technical opinion, with regards to the principle of development, this has been established by the consented prior approval application which permits the conversion of the existing building to residential. In terms of parking, access and highway safety, no objections have been raised by the county highways authority and the level of parking would be acceptable when compared to the council's guidelines. Two mature, in terms of trees, two mature birch trees would be lost as a result of the development, however the loss of these trees is not considered harmful to warrant refusal of permission. The application is also acceptable in terms of ecology. With regards to the matters of judgment, the application would be different in design to the surrounding properties, however is considered to be of an acceptable design. With regards to the impact on the amenities of the adjoining properties, this is also considered to be acceptable and the, therefore, subject to the completion of a legal agreement securing the provision of 30% affordable housing, infrastructure contributions towards leisure enhancements, recycling, environmental improvements and education, the application is recommended for approval. Thank you chairman.
Thank you Chris, this application is subject to public speaking and I would like to invite Chris Slater who is objecting to the application to use his four minutes. Good evening Mr Slater, I understand the procedure has been explained to you.
Yes.
Make yourself comfortable and when you're ready to speak, your four minutes will start from then, thank you.
First of all, my first point is that the development would cause significant overshadowing to the south-facing windows of my flat, I live in Thornbrook House which is 12 metres away as stated. The application passed BRE standards but that doesn't mean anything to me and it's quite clear that I would lose a considerable amount of daylight, of daylight to my flat and sunlight. Secondly, I'm not sure that the scale of the proposed elevation would be in keeping with surrounding buildings, although the planners have commented that it would not appear out of scale. Standard House is very close to Thornbrook House and to other buildings nearby and in my opinion it, it, the other buildings are not as tall as Standard House would be according to the application. Thirdly, regarding parking and highways, especially highways, Catersall Lane is already busy, high number and frequency of car journeys on that road, there's a lot of people live there, so there's already a lot of, a lot of noise and air pollution from all the cars going down, there's cars parked on either side of the road and I don't know whether there are any potential issues about safety, emergency vehicles, especially fire engines getting down that road because it's so narrow and it's got cars parked on either side, so I don't know if adding more traffic is a sensible thing without, with such an narrow road. Fourthly, and I don't know if this has been updated but I wasn't able to see the plans last night because your website wasn't working, so this is from when I first objected a few months ago, the planning application wasn't supported by the local flood or flood, flood authority, sorry county council, so I don't know why it's been put forward to the public to look at without that being in place first. Fifthly, the labelling of the proposed and actual drawings on the plans that were, were on the website, I found very contradictory and confusing, making proper scrutiny difficult. Northwest was confused with North East on 402 P20E03 and 402 P20E01, I can share that with anyone afterwards. Southwest was confused with Southeast, again making proper scrutiny difficult. And, and an extension of this point is that the actual visual image of the planned extensions were, I couldn't find those until I got to page nine of the design and access statement part two, which was on the fourth page of documents when you're flicking through the application on, on the website. And I'm sure that many people with reasonable will to look at the application and consider it will have given up long before actually seeing that, so I don't know if it was a deliberate attempt to obfuscate, perhaps not, but in any case it did obfuscate the actual proper scrutiny of the plan, which I didn't consider to be particularly fair on those who it will affect. And another point is that the works would cause a considerable disruption to the lives of those already living in Wayside Park itself, you mentioned people already in Thornbrook in one of the other buildings, I've also seen people going into Standard House, families, so I don't know whether that's already been occupied by some people, that's going to be a very considerable disruption and there are young families with children living in Thornbrook House as well and the whole area's going to be turned into a building site already with the Thornbrook House proposal being accepted and I don't think that just because that's been accepted, that should make, make it easier to accept Standard House's application because it's just adding more on top of the suffering of the people that are going to be there throughout, throughout these lengthy, lengthy works.
Thank you. Okay, thank you Mr Slater. Now I'd invite Philip Morris who is supporting the application. Good evening Mr Morris, I understand the procedure's been explained to you as well.
Yes.
Jolly good, thank you.
Evening all, my name's Phil Morris, I am the director of Create Design, we're the architects for Standard House. As Chris already noted, this application has been recommended for approval pending the section 106 agreement which is already underway. No objections have been raised by any of the statutory consultation bodies as we the architects concur with the finding of the case officer's report. It's also worth noting that we're currently working with the client to prepare the relevant information commensurate with the construction of the granted prior approval scheme and this full application together. Only five objections to this application have been received from local residents, I'll briefly touch on the points raised that I've summarised into five individual points. Number one is the loss of the existing office space, the prior approval for the change of use of this building was granted in 2016, the change of use does not perform part of this application and therefore is not a material planning consideration. Number two is highways, safety and parking, the county highways authority have raised no objections to the proposal and the parking provision is in line with the council's adopted parking guidance. Number three, the residential overdevelopment as is noted in the objections, as noted in the officer's report, the site is within the developed area of Godalming and as such the principle of residential development has been supported. Number four, the height and design of the building in relation to the rest of Wayside Park and the street scene. Whilst we recognise that Standard House will differ from the other buildings within Wayside Park, the proposal has been designed to respect its setting and we've carefully utilised the same roof pitch and form and proposed the use of brick to match and complement the existing building and those around it. The officer's report notes that Thornbrook House, the rear of Standard House, already has commissioned for a third and fourth floor extension which would make Thornbrook House, if implemented, an entire story taller than the proposed scheme at Standard House. Lastly, number five, overshadowing to Thornbrook House and also the properties on Catersall Lane. The properties on the south side of Catersall Lane are sufficiently separated from the application property to ensure that there would be no direct impact on their amenity. Thornbrook House was the subject of a thorough daylight and sunlight impact assessment, the results of which show that the closest windows on Thornbrook House meet the daylight and sunlight criteria set out by the BRE. I would also mention that the flood risk issue which is noted by the previous member has since been dealt with by myself and Chris French and also as I'm sure were, construction traffic, traffic is, is also not a material planning consideration. Just like to add that the application includes the provision of six shared ownership affordable dwellings which is compliant with local policy and has been agreed with the council's housing enabling officer. In conclusion, I'd just again like to echo Chris's comments to note that the proposed development is acceptable with regards to its impact on the character of the local area, residential amenity, ecology and highways safety. The development accords with the development plan and therefore planning permission should be granted. Thank you all for your time.
Thank you Mr Morris. Members, councillor Follows.
Thank you chairman, so just to elaborate on my declaration, I live in what is on the map called Panda House but is in practice called Weave You Place, so Weave You Place which is over the other side from Thornbrook. The two main issues I have with this is that with that number of people being added to that area, there's already a bit of a waste management issue in that park and because there is a storage space for Weave You Place and then there's effectively a line of bins and recycling bins for Thornbrook. Can you just elaborate on what space you're allocating and if you, and why you believe that's sufficient considering the issues that we've already got there? Also, I have to agree with the gentleman that spoke first, it is going to be quite a significant structure and it only, it only stays in keeping with the buildings around it if the other one actually does happen, so I'd just like to keep that in mind too. But the, the waste management, the parking and the traffic issues, I think we would, I'd really like to have that elaborated on, thank you.
Thank you, Chris, did you want to address those points now or would you rather wait until we hear some other members? Yeah? You address them now, okay.
Thank you chairman. In terms of, in terms of bin, bin storage, there's a new, new bin area which is proposed to the, to the south, south here, we've consulted with environmental health waste management and they've not raised any objection to the, to the scheme. Thank you.
Thank you chairman, being a man of simple mind, thank you to all the councillors, I'm confused about the numbers. Can we have some clarity about how many dwellings there will be if this planning application goes ahead, how many parking spaces there are or proposed and how many dwellings will be affordable? Thank you. Thank you. Officers?
The, there's a prior approval on the site for the ground and the first floor and the, the additional, the additional units are the 19 at the second floor and within the roof space and that takes the, the total to, to 45 which is the, the 19 plus the 26 on the, on, on the description. And the, I believe the second, second question was how much affordable housing is, is proposed, is six? Ah, okay, so we've got 62 parking spaces which takes into account the, the whole of the, those two elements, so the prior approval and the, and the 19 additional. And in terms of the affordable housing, the, the proposal's for six affordable housing units which is based on the, the 19 additional units, 30% being provided. Thank you chairman.
Of course councillor Bolton.
Thank you chairman, did you say 62 because that doesn't seem to be an appropriate multiple of 45 in terms of parking places? And six affordable, well I can see that that's 30% of the 19 but it's not 30% of the 45, it seems as though they're getting away cheaply.
I think you'll find councillor Bolton that the 26 are under a permitted development so we can't impose any proportion of affordable housing, only on these, these 19 that are up for consideration this evening.
Yeah, thank you chairman. The, the 62 spaces is based on kind of bedroom, kind of bedroom numbers rather than necessarily the number of, the number, well it's based on the, the number of two-bedroom and one-bedroom units, the, the guidance would, would require 62.5 and it's 62 is what's proposed, so yeah, thank you chairman.
Thank you. Councillor Holder.
Thank you chairman, I like councillor Bolton, I'm slightly confused by this, on page 15 it says that prior approval was given for 33 flats in November 2016 and yet only 26 have been built, so I'm just wondering why, what's happening to the space of those existing seven flats? If, if that could be answered, thank you.
Thank you chairman, yeah the, and that's because the prior approval included some units within the, within the roof space of the, of the building and obviously the roof space is not to be, is now no, no longer as part of this proposal and so the proposal wouldn't be to build out all of the units which had prior approval, it would be to build out the units on, on the ground and the first floor if that.
Councillor James.
Thank you chairman, can you tell me how many parking spaces there are at the moment for the office use so I can work out how much the increase of vehicular movements could be if the officers are aware of that now? And secondly, if they could point out on the map where the two trees that are coming down, one assumes that they are where the two-storey extension's going to be built which is why they've got to come down, but it doesn't tell me that in the agenda paper. Thank you chairman.
Shall we go on to a few more members' comments and then I'll let you round up things at the end Chris, I think it would be easier. Councillor Peter Martin.
Oh thank you Mr Chairman, I have great difficulty with this application, I, I didn't, I have never been in agreement with government policy which is destroying commercial premises in this town and removing employment and I'm opposed to that policy, this should never have been taken away from commercial in the first place, I know that there's nothing that I can do or say to reverse that policy unless we get a reversal of government policy. So, I was not very happy when this was converted in the, in the first place into, into housing and logically I can't be therefore happy to support extra housing going in here. On the other hand, I have, I realise that I can't find good planning reasons to, to oppose it and what I've heard so far, I don't think amounts to any good planning reason to oppose it. So sadly for I think only the third occasions that I've been a member of this county, of this council, I shall abstain, which I don't like doing at all, but I just can't bring myself to vote in favour of this which I regard as being a sad destruction of the employment potential in this town. I may hear other objections to this which perhaps I could then believe in but if I don't, I will be abstaining, thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Follows, you wish to come back?
One very minor point, firstly I actually agree completely with Peter there, I hate doing that but I completely agree with Peter and I will probably abstain as well for the same reason. I would also just like to confirm, I also have seen people going into that property which would imply that there are people living there, I'm sure I've seen families move in with, with, with their, with their stuff, so I'd just like to know what's happening with those individuals because at the moment it does seem to be non-business activity going on in that building.
Councillor Tom Martin.
Much that I share the concerns of councillors Martin and Follows, ultimately what we're looking at here is a net gain of 12 dwellings over and above what has been approved under prior notification approval, because that has essentially an approval for 33 units, 26 of them that the developers are going to build, but they could build all 33 without doing anything at all. So, the net gain is 12 and I think the, the increase in traffic over and above what it might be used as an office block is probably very marginal and I suspect that's why the county highways authority haven't issued any sort of objection. Given that there is already approval for 20, for 33 units, I suspect that's why people are already moving in because those units can be, can be used, there is no requirement for any further planning approval in order to use any of those units for residential Much that I would like to object to this on, on principle because of the use, it has approval, in, in principle the office block is no longer an office block, it is a residential unit and we're looking at a small increase in the footprint. and we're looking at a small increase in the footprint, which if this was a house and people were squaring off a house, I suspect we wouldn't be particularly concerned about it. Yes, it's on a slightly bigger scale and we're putting some dormable windows, but the net gain is 12 units. And I cannot come up with a sound planning argument to vote against officers' recommendations. I will be voting in favour.
Thank you. councillor Reynolds.
Thank you very much, Chairman. I agree with every word that councillor Peter Martin said firstly, and also actually councillor Tom Martin said secondly. I don't like this application at all, I've always been against these. And in fact, I think we have a record, this committee have always been against these without needing permission from us as other officers or as councillors to change these office buildings into flats. Sadly, that has not been able, hasn't been possible due to government policy, so we are where we are. I can't find a proper valid planning reason to vote against this. I have great sympathy with our first speaker because putting on another two levels will cause a bit of lack of sunlight, it says so in the report. Equally, the building he lives in apparently is also going to have another two stories added to. So whoever buys these flats will end up losing sunlight as well when the other development happens. But sadly, we are where we are. And as I said, I can't think of a reason. I won't abstain because I haven't done so in 11 years on a planning committee, I think it's a bit of a cop-out. So I'm afraid I will be voting with the officers, but under great duress.
Thank you. councillor Lee.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. First of all, just a thought on these parking spaces. When the sums are done, as the officer said, 62 and a half spaces are required. Now, we've known for a long time that half a vehicle is rather a silly thing to contend with. But I would certainly have been looking for 63 and not 62 parking spaces. And I will just observe that that is on the theoretical density of traffic from those who are living there. Takes no account of visitors. There's no parking spaces for anybody like that. And therefore, I don't feel it meets the living standards that we should be helping to provide for people. Now, the other thing is, my observation is that we had a statement on page 21, 19 new units meet 2015 space standards. Now, I find it rather difficult just to accept that. I'd like to see proof of that. Because we certainly had a planning meeting last night where overall, it could be said the planning measurements were met, that some of those houses were actually below, some of the rooms were below those standards. And I feel that if these things are being created and used as a rule for decent living that meets people's health and wellbeing, then we must stand by them and look for things greater than, not less than, the actual figures that are given. Final comment is, this side of Catterell Lane was laid out for commercial use. The buildings are so constructed and laid out in the form they are for offices and other aspects of commercial use. We are now translating these into residential accommodation, where the sort of living habits, if you will, of families are quite different from people going to work there. And I just don't think this is a very good sort of overall design. It is quite true, planning reasons, but I can't support it because it will be going against what I feel people deserve. But I won't sort of vote against it. Thank you very much, Chair.
councillor Bolton, did you wish to agree?
Yes. Thank you, Chair. Very briefly, just to take up something that councillor Tom Martin said, yes, it is 19, sorry, an extra 12 dwellings, but I would like to point out that six will be affordable. Thank you.
Thank you. councillor Williams.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. Knowing this area quite well for several years now, and knowing the complaints which have been made by residents, I would fall back on the question of overdevelopment. Perhaps it's one floor too many. There is and there will be overlooking problems, as we've heard from the first public speaker. I'm not at all happy about the proposed balconies, but we'll see what the shielding could be. I support what has been said about parking. And anyone using Catterell Road knows it is in a complete and utter mess. We've got more development further down Catterell and I am surprised that there hasn't been a bad accident along that road. How anybody can ride a bike along there, I really don't know. So I've also got concern about future occupants if that happens and overshadowing generally. Certainly, one part of the proposal, the buildings seem to be remarkably close. So all in all, I would say it is overdevelopment and I will not be following the officers' points. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Chris, did you want to come back on, clarify some of the points that were raised earlier, please?
Thank you, Chair. There's a couple of points that I'd like to just clarify. First of all, the trees that have been referred to are the trees that are here on the plan, the silver birch, silver birch trees. There was a question about whether any of the parking spaces, whether there was any change in terms of the parking provision. There are some spaces at the rear of the building which would be lost because of the two-story rear extension. But officers are satisfied that the provision that's shown as 62 spaces is very close to the guidance that we've adopted. So we find that to be acceptable. There was a question about the activity in the building and I'm just mindful that they do have a prior approval for residential, but I must admit, I'm not aware of whether that's been brought into use or not. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. councillor Bolton.
Mr Chairman, can I come back? I'm slightly puzzled. Is this an outline application or are there any reserved matters or it's not clear?
To be clear, this is an application for full planning permission. There is an extant prior approval which could be implemented at any point. These are, this is a standalone permission, regardless of whether that prior approval is implemented, that could be part implemented, and this scheme in tandem as well. There would be no conflict between the two and we're satisfied of that. Just to pick up another point with regards to parking and traffic movements, which I know, we all know that area very well, we know that that's one of the major concerns in that area. The parking guidelines, as I'm sure you're aware as a committee, do actually include visitor parking spaces. So that is built into the requirements of those guidelines. Traffic movements, which I think is perhaps the thing that is concerning some members in particular, I think on page 22 of your report, there are actually some comments about trip generation and the fact that generally speaking, officers have very high levels of trip generation and that the residential development would be likely to actually generate less trips from the site than the lawful office use. So I hope that sort of offers a bit of comfort and clarification with regards to those critical issues this evening. Thank you, Chairman.
councillor Upton.
Just one observation. On the rear photograph showing the trees, are those air conditioning units on the back of that building, to the left of the picture? What a provision for fresh ventilation to the building then if they are removed? Presumably, they won't be there when it becomes a domestic property.
I think that's, that would all appear to be part of the prior approval scheme, it's not part of what we're considering today. But I don't know if the officers have any knowledge about the air conditioning? No, they don't? Okay. Okay. councillor Byan.
I recognise all the concerns expressed and I have the same concern about car parking. But am I right in saying that with prior approval applications, which of course we got here, they don't have to justify their parking standards at all? You could have a building in the middle of the town with no parking whatsoever and get prior approval and therefore the additional 12 properties that we're talking about here, there are 62 places for the 12 properties perhaps? It's a bizarre way of putting it, but nevertheless, it's the mixing of these two sets of agreements or planning law, prior approval and full planning permission which makes us have a great difficulty in accepting what is being put forward.
Thank you. councillor Follows, you wish to come back?
Just a response to councillor Upton. As I live in the building across from there and it also used to be a converted office, my gut feeling is that the air conditioning was taken out of that building because there's absolutely no way the office would have tolerated it to be the greenhouse that it has subsequently become. So I would actually like an answer to what the air conditioning situation is because if anything like Weevy Place, the temperature variations are horrendous.
Officers, anybody like to comment on that?
Thank you, Chairman. So the air conditioning units that you can see in the photograph there, they're on a part of the building that is not necessarily affected by the planning application that is before you this evening. The noise from those for the future residents of the properties directly adjacent to those air conditioning units on the ground and first floor is not something that was before officers to consider at the stage of prior approval. So we have no control effectively over those air conditioning units. Obviously, with regards to the future amenity of the residents of the floors above, which is what you're considering at the moment, we don't have a response from environmental health, but equally, they aren't shown on the elevations as proposed. So we could reasonably assume that those air conditioning units will not remain on the building. Obviously, there will be a requirement in building regulations terms for suitable ventilation of the properties as residential properties, but that's not necessarily something that is before you this evening as a planning committee to consider. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you, Catherine. councillor Wheatley.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. Taking that point forward, it sort of suggests to me that the premises occupied by councillor Fellows must be badly insulated. Do we know whether good insulation is planned? I mean, I presume one needs better insulation with residential properties rather than commercial. And especially if the air conditioning is going, you need to know that if it's cold, you can shut your windows and you'll stay warm and if it's hot, then you likewise can open them and let the heat out. Do we know anything about insulation, please?
Chris?
Thank you, Chair. I think those kind of ventilation and insulation issues are more building regulation considerations than they are for us to be looking at under the planning stage. So it's not something that we'd be considering at this stage. Thank you.
councillor Follows.
On the same line, can somebody talk to me about the windows in the property? Because if it's anything like the other buildings on Wayside Park, the main windows don't actually open. So the properties that, in Weevy Place, for example, they open by two very, very tiny windows, so it is actually not very easy to regulate the temperature. Are the windows being changed substantially? Because actually, the bulk of the windows do not actually open.
Chairman, point of order, are we not discussing building control issues now?
I think we probably are, yes. I think the elevations do show that windows are being changed, but things like that do come under, even though it's a change of use from office to residential, it still has to comply with building regulations for residential properties. So if any other member wishes to comment now? Okay, shall we move on to the recommendation then, which is, I've lost it again now? Yeah, that's the short version, I've got a longer version. Right. Recommendation A, that subject to completion of a section 106 agreement to secure 30% affordable housing and infrastructure contributions towards leisure enhancements, recycling, environmental improvements and education within six months of the date of the committee resolution to grant that permission, that permission be granted subject to conditions 1 to 21 and informatives 1 to 4 on pages 27 to 32 of the report, that permission be granted. All those in favour?
Two.
And abstentions?
Three.
In that case, that recommendation A is granted. And we also have recommendation B. Recommendation B, that if the requirements of the recommendation A are not met, permission B refused for reasons 1 to 2 set out on pages 32 to 33 of the report. All those in favour of recommendation B? Thank you. While the officers play musical chairs, we'll move on to item B1. Planning application reference WA oblique 2017 oblique 1747. And the proposal is the change of use and alterations to restaurant to form office class B1 and three flats, together with erection of detached dwelling to rear following the demolition of existing extension as amended by plans received on the 3rd of August, 3rd of August? Don't believe that. 2018, date to be amended, at Forum Court, 135 High Street, Godleming, GU71AF. And Catherine is going to introduce this application.
Thank you, Chairman. Apologies for that typo. Members, the site is located at the top of the High Street in Godleming, on its southern side. The site currently comprises a three-story listed building with a series of single-story extensions to the rear here. The site has most recently been used as a hot food takeaway restaurant, but it's currently vacant and in a state of disrepair. So these are the existing elevations. This is the three-story, rather handsome front elevation that fronts directly onto the High Street. And the side elevation, looking the other way, across the site, and the rear elevation. This is the property, as you can see, it has a series of roof lines and an existing sort of flat roof extension, single-story extension at the rear at present, which was formerly the kitchens for the takeaway business. As the chairman mentioned, the proposal is for a change of use of the building to form a mixed use of offices and flats, together with the erection of a detached two-story dwelling at the rear of the site here. In the basement, there would be an office use. And at ground floor, there would be an office use retaining a frontage onto the High Street with a flat on the ground floor as well. This here is the ground floor of the proposed detached dwelling in the rear sort of yard area of the site. First floor again, two more flats, which also, one of them also extends up into the second floor on the frontage of the building here. This is the house, the muse house, at the back of the property, that would slot into the corner of the site, looking from the west and the east, so either side of the building. This is the northern elevation, so effectively the elevation you would get if from the back of the three-story building. And the reverse elevation, which is the southern elevation, this is what you would partial... partially see from Flambard Way, so the back of the building here and this part here being the proposed detached residential property. This is just a contextual visualisation provided by the applicant, just to kind of indicate the street scene from that rear elevation. So this is the application building here, the detached dwelling here in the foreground and the other properties obviously in the immediately surrounding area and the car park, the public car park here. In the corner here is a large tree of heaven, which is the subject of a TPO and is a matter for members to consider this evening. So the tree is located in this rather tight courtyard at the rear of the property. The existing site layout plan is shown here on the left-hand side of the plan, so you've got the frontage here to the leftmost part of the plan, three-storey going down to two-storey and the single-storey flat-roofed extension that you saw in the photographs here and the tree and its crown spread here. On the right-hand side of this plan is the proposed layout, so retaining the three and two-storey parts of the building, the single-storey extension would go as part of the proposals and the two-storey detached muse dwelling at the back here. And this really just demonstrates sort of the proximity of that tree and sort of the constraints that would have to be considered. Just take you through some photographs, just to sort of put this in context. So this is the existing front elevation on the High Street, I'm sure you're all familiar with it. As I say, it's currently in a state of disrepair inside and it is obviously a listed building, so that is of some concern. And this is a photograph of that rear elevation. You can see here the building with its single-storey extension, the former extraction units, and this here is the tree of heaven. So the matters this evening on which you're being asked to exercise your judgement as a committee are the impact of the development on visual amenity, the balance of considerations of the potential loss of that tree versus the reuse of a building and the provision of housing in a sustainable location and the impact on residential amenity for both existing and proposed occupiers. The recommendation is as set out in the agenda, that permission be granted subject to conditions. Thank you, chairman.
Thank you, Catherine. Could you just clarify something for me? Am I right in thinking that our report shows an L-shaped, single-storey muse cottage and now we're being asked to consider a two-story rectangular muse cottage?
Just give me a moment, I'll check the file. Thank you, chairman.
Well, can I help you? Because the report does show an L-shaped, single-storey building. Sorry?
Which had two bedrooms, my question was going to ask where the other third bedroom was, but I think obviously the revised application has superseded the plans we've got in front of us.
Okay. Would any members like to speak while the officers are looking at the drawings? Councillor Reynolds?
Yes, well, I think the first thing to say is that the building is looking very tired. It has been unused probably for, I don't know, probably approaching a year, I guess, and it is quite sad to see because it is a very handsome building at the top end of Godalming High Street. I think my first reaction when I saw this was it was sad that we would be losing what is a nice building and has been a restaurant for many years, although I think it's safe to say, I mean, I've been in Godalming a long time ago, a long time, that it used to be a very good French restaurant called Chantilly Claire, but it's a more recent restaurant was a Chinese and sort of, well, quite good, I think it was mainly a takeaway because the few times I went in, in say in the last five or 10 years, there were very few diners, so it wasn't terribly well-used. So I think sadly we've got to look at an alternative use for the site and I think this application is good in the sense that it will keep an office use, it'll keep a bit of commercial use on this site and then provide, as you say, some residential, which I don't object to. I think probably the muse building in the back is a good use of that space. Whether the tree survives or not, I think is, we'll have to wait and see. I'm a little bit with councillor Peter Martin on trees, we do have quite a few in this part of the world, so I won't lament the loss of another one, although maybe if they planted something a bit smaller in its place, wouldn't be a bad thing. But I think in general, I think this is quite a good application. It's going to, as you say, rescue a rather full-on site and provide A offices and B some residential. I can't think of another good use for the building as it stands, so I would be in favour of it. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Tom Martin?
I very much agree with that, from the point of view of the tree. I'm not overly worried about, appreciate it, it does have a TPO on it, but that tree is native to both north-east and central China as well as Taiwan, so we're not exactly looking at a fine native species of tree for the area, nice as it is. So I agree that, I think it is a good use of the space, it does provide some housing, it does keep the frontage as is and I suspect it will look an awful lot neater and tidier at that end of Godalming and I think that can only be a good thing, so I'm very much in favour of this. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Peter Martin?
Thank you, I agree with everything that's been said by our last two speakers. I think this is a tired building and it's a lovely, it's potentially a lovely building. It's a very, and it's, in terms of its use for commercial use, it's very marginal. The restaurants that have been there have not been particularly successful and I don't think it's an easy place to adjust to commercial use. So I feel that at least retaining some commercial there is good and we've gotten some additional housing out of it and it will be restored to its full glory. The tree, I'm much less concerned about, it sounds it's got 20 years to live and I'm sure that if anything does happen to it, we can plant something else and in a few years' time, that will be a wonderful tree as well. So I think on balance, I'm pretty happy with this and I'll be voting for the recommendation.
Councillor Lee?
Thank you, chairman. Yes, a tired building, I thought it was a wreck personally and has been for quite a few years, unfortunately, because it had character and its character is largely hidden at the moment and I think this particular application will really enhance the building and it will be and it should become something of beauty and to anybody who's looking at it. Very impressed by the size of the rooms that there appear to be, unless everybody's gone into miniaturisation of tables and chairs and things, that seems good and should provide some good living. From what has already been said and my own thoughts, I do support this particular application. I'm hoping that the residents will largely be working locally or at least walking down to the station if they need to work elsewhere. However, with all that, there will definitely be vehicles and as the report acknowledges, there's no parking spaces being provided and people will be making use of the Waverley car park behind. I just reflect that a week ago, I went into that particular car park leading up to midday and had to go out again because there were no spaces and that's happened to me twice, you know, within the last couple of months. So we're not going to get a situation that's going to be easily resolved so far as parking is concerned. Thank you, Mr Chairman.
Thank you. Councillor Follows?
I should say, I also agree with the comments of my fellow councillors. As you might have probably gathered from the previous application, I was also, I'm probably looking to move, so having some nice, new, different types of dwelling in the centre of Godalming, not a bad idea. So yes, very much will be in support of this application.
Would you like to declare an interest, councillor Follows? Just, councillor Bolton?
Thank you, chairman. Because the plans apparently have changed for this muse property, can we just be clear what the new plans are for both for the ground floor and the first floor of the muse property? I assume that that's the first floor of the muse property on the right-hand side.
I'm confused if Elsted, so I'll pass this over to the officers.
Thank you, chairman, I'm sorry that I've confused you. The plans were amended during the life of the application in response to trying to alleviate some of the concerns we had about the impact on the tree. So the rectangular shaped property is the property that you are considering, so it's been reduced from the L shape to a rectangular shape. So the plans that you can see are ground floor, ground floor plans, ground floor of the muse property and the first floor shown on this plan here.
Members, are you happy to move to the recommendation? Jolly good. So the recommendation is that subject to conditions 1 to 3 and informatives 1 to 9 on pages 56 to 62, permission be granted, all those in favour? So we now move on to item B2, which is planning application reference WA 2017 2310 and the proposal is erection of extensions and alterations to main workshop building and erection of a new workshop building followed demolition of an existing building, together with provision of car parking on forecourt and associated works as amended by plans received on the 23rd of January 2018 and the 16th of March 2018 at Red Lion Garage, Portsmouth Road, Thursley GU86NJ and Alex is going to introduce this application to us.
Thank you, chairman. This is the location plan, which shows the full extent of the site and this application only concerns the eastern half of the site here, which was shown this side just here. So this is the proposed block plan, showing the layout of the extended and the proposed buildings, as well as the car parking layout and the access negress points at the front of the site. So here and here. Just for clarity, for the rest of the presentation here, I'll be referring to the workshop building here as workshop and the other office and workshop building as the main building. So this slide shows the existing workshop building with a ridge height of 4.6 metres, width of nine metres and a depth of eight metres. This slide shows the existing floor plan of the workshop, including the storage mezzanine above at first floor level. This shows the existing elevations of the main building with a ridge height of six metres, width of 7.7 metres and a depth of 18.5 metres. Should I say the ridge height is a maximum, as you can see the ground level is quite uneven. So this shows the main building floor plans as existing, with some mixture of workshop space and office space at first, at ground floor level, with storage space at first floor. This slide shows the proposed elevations of the replacement workshop building. This has a maximum ridge height of 7.6 metres with a depth of 17.5 and a width of 11 metres. This shows the proposed elevations of the main building, which would have a maximum ridge height of 6.5 metres, which is taken at the front, which is where the ground slopes away, so the extensions don't actually increase the height as such, but it's a higher measurement because of the sloping ground levels. And the width will be between 14 metres, where the side extension is to be, over here, and 7.7 metres with a depth of between 25 metres and 12 metres. So these are the proposed workshop floor plans, including a two-story height car ramp, which is this section just here, and the office space at first floor level as well. And these are the proposed floor plans of the main building, with the single-storey extension to the side and also to the front as well. Now, these are some site photographs showing the existing workshop building. And this is to be demolished and replaced. And these are showing the elevations of the main building, which is to be extended. Some site photos of the forecourt area, which is to be rearranged for parking and turning areas. And these fuel pumps, also the historic fuel pumps, are to be retained but moved, they will be at one end of the extended main building. And then this, a site photo is from the back area of the site, which is, so this area is to be cut into and flattened, leveled out for, to provide the required parking spaces for the development. And just before we go on to the matter of principle, technical opinion and judgement, I would just draw attention to the update sheet, you should all hopefully have seen, which was relaying a consultative response from the Highway Authority in relation to the block plan that you saw at the start of the presentation. And just to confirm that they've raised no objections to the amended plans, subject to the conditions that are set out in that document. And also draw attention to, there was a further supporting statement received today, or last night, from the agent to bring to our attention an error in one of the, with one of the figures in table 1, which you can see on page, I believe it's 73. Just so members are aware, the proposed floor space of the main building should read 351 metres squared, which results in a percentage change of 88% rather than 144%. It's also noted that the medium-term solution that's referenced in the business case is put forward as a very special circumstance, should not be taken to mean that there's a long-term desire to move away from the site but to potentially open a second site should further expansion be required. So move to the determining issues, the matters of principle and technical opinion are the area of potentially contaminated land, highways and parking, biodiversity, the impact on the areas of common land and the right of way, the effect on the SPAs and the SAC, impact on the trees and the hedgerow, and matters of judgment for you today are the impact on the green belt, the design and impact on the visual amenity, the area of outstanding natural beauty and the area of great landscape value and the impact on residential amenity. And the recommendation as set out in the report is for refusal on the grounds of harm to the openness and further encroachment into the green belt, the very special circumstances put forward are not considered to exist to outweigh this harm. Thank you, chairman.
Thank you very much. As Ward councillor, I've asked this application to come before us, notwithstanding the officers' very thorough report that you've all received, I just felt that almost one of the only employment buildings in Thursley Village should receive the full weight and consideration of this committee. Most of us will know the building from when the A3 used to run between that and the Red Lion, Red Lion pub, it's been a garage for, well, longer than I can remember, I know that. Mathwall, the applicants have been there for nearly 40 years now and have built up a very successful business and would like to stay there and stay in the village, so I would, well... So I would welcome the views of all of you committee members. Start with councillor Tom Martin.
Thank you. I appreciate the the report that the officers have put put forward, but I have to say, I think I I come to a different conclusion on the impact on the green belt. What we have at the moment is a pretty dilapidated set of buildings that that I don't really think lead me to think there's any sort of attractiveness in the area. And what is put forward, albeit significantly bigger, mainly due to height rather than floor space, it looks better, quite frankly. I also note that Natural England have on page seventy one state as a consultation, no objection subject to conditions. And and I think that's that's pretty significant because they they are sort of some of our experts on on green belts and so on. And so I I think the this small business should be encouraged. And I and I think, yes, they have alternative plans, they're not intended to leave the site, but I think I would rather see a small business develop and grow within Waverley than see it move elsewhere. So I think at the moment, appreciating I'm the first person to speak, I would go against the officer's recommendations. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Peter Martin.
This is, Mr Chairman, a consideration of the green belt, and I understand that we want to protect our green belt and do everything that's reasonable to do just that. But this this has been a commercial space for a very, very long time. Indeed, the commercial space is an old garage, I suspect predates green belt policy. And I think that we should exercise a bit more judgment in favour of the of commercial and industrial use within the green belt, especially when it's already there. And we shouldn't regard the green belt as a museum piece. Businesses have to exist, they have to thrive and have to grow. And what we've got here is not a huge increase in the overall footprint. It's mainly the extra space caused by additional height, which I think I can put up with. This is a well screened area close to the A three. I don't think the impact is going to be at all great on on the on the green belt or on the or other people in the in Thursley. So, you know, I just think it's a bit of a judgment call, and my judgment is to say, hey, I'd like to preserve this piece of commercial enterprise here and see it thrive and grow. And I think what they're proposing here is not to make it vast. Of course, it's an increase, but I think that's a perfectly reasonable increase. And indeed, in many ways, I think the overall site will look better with this development than without it. So my judgment is to the other way from that which the officers have 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 done. And I will be voting against the officer recommendation and for the application to go ahead. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Reynolds.
Thank you, Chairman. I concur with everything the two Martins have said. I would point out that, yes, this is green belt, but equally it is a slip road off a rather major national trunk road going through our area. It is also on the confluence of two other roads, so it's it's technically green belt, but it's not the sort of green belt that we would all rush to go and want to protect with barricades that I think some of us might. Equally, I live in your ward, we have hundreds of thousands of acres of green belt and A O N B, much of it in a much nicer view of the green belt than that particular little enclave. As the previous speakers have said, let's let's stand up for a company in our ward, in our area, in our borough that's been there forty years, wants to grow and do even more good stuff, and they take their cars down to Goodwood. I I'm a member, so that's my small declaration of non interest really, but I think it's great. Let's support a business. I don't think it's going to have the visual impact that the officers fear. I agree that it'll probably look a lot better. I mean, the the buildings do look sadly a little bit dilapidated, like our Forum Court restaurant. And so a slightly revised building, slightly higher but probably not a lot bigger, I don't think will have any impact, and I think it should be supported. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor James.
Thank you, Chairman. Yes, actually, I will be voting against the officer's recommendation, which is quite unusual for me, because having agreed the local plan, which removes vast areas of green belt around Milford, which are very open, i.e. as soon as you leave the A three, the area on the right hand side where an inspector said it can be removed from the green belt, which is very open and it could have a housing estate on it. So I cannot, in my heart, say that this would not actually enhance what is already there in the green belt, because just because it's in the green belt, you cannot just not do anything. And we had an application some years ago about changing an aircraft hangar, which was in the green belt, because it had been built years ago for a small little aeroplane, and now the owners have a jet plane, and they're slightly bigger than they were when it was probably hand flapping. But the officers recommended refusal on that because it was in the green belt. But life moves on. This is a company. Life's moved on since it first began, whatever it was, forty years ago. And I I think we have to support what is there, and it's in, I think it's enhancing it. And because it's in the green belt, you know, you could just remove that little bit from the green belt if we'd always wanted to, but it washes over. So I have actually no problem with the application. So I'm sorry, officers.
Thank you. Councillor Follows.
We'll also be voting to approve this application. I think the the supporting of a local business, as the Chair has indicated, as well as improving the general buildings and look and feel of the whole area, mitigates any loss to the green belt, so I'll be voting in favour of it.
Thank you very much. Councillor Holder.
Thank you, Chair. I have to confess, I was slightly puzzled by this application, because I often pass that garage on the way through Bowlow Green to my house, and I've never, ever seen any activity there. So I was slightly puzzled as to why they needed to expand. So I thought I'd do a little bit of research on the internet. Mathwell was a partnership between two employees of Alan Mann Racing in nineteen sixty seven, Mr Stuart Matheson and Peter Wallace. I don't know what happened to Peter Wallace, but in two thousand and seven, Stuart Matheson handed over the business to his son Mark, and who brought in another director, William Hartley. There were two directors at that stage. William Hartley lasted for exactly a year and a half before he resigned, so there's now just one director. And there are two other employees in the company, just two. So the whole amount of people in that company amounts to three. Mark Matheson, the owner and director, Ken Williamson, who is a junior engineer, and Ricky Cathy, who is an engineer mechanic. There's absolutely no way they can work on more than one car at a time. The existing building is sufficient, although very dilapidated, is sufficient for their current needs. I don't understand why they're wishing to expand by over three hundred percent, when they can only work on one car at one time. So I'm afraid, I think this is a bit of a scam. I'll be supporting the officer's recommendation to refuse.
Thank you. Councillor Lee.
Thank you, Chairman. Also thank the officers for the quality of the report, and I can well understand how they have come to the decision that they have. I think it is a matter of judgment and this assessment of very special circumstances. Beginning at the report, I was very taken by the fact that this is a local business, and you, Mr Chairman, have indicated that it's been in existence for forty years. So I would say that we're dealing with a sound business. And in the sort of business case that has been written about here in the report, that all marks out that they have an international clientele, and they have been providing these services over a long period of time. It would appear to me that whatever the uncertainties of Brexit are, it doesn't seem to worry them. They're very anxious to sort of continue any investment and and go forward. So I do very much feel in line with this business and this business approach. Now, so far as the impact on the green belt is concerned, perhaps I don't understand everything about the green belt, I'm sure I don't, but certainly from that road, you don't really get much of an impact on the site itself as to it being in the green belt or the green belt is offering you benefits that you can see and appreciate. And I personally don't see that with the developments proposed, that that will alter in any way. Now, we also know that even if it was, even if the officers' recommendations were overturned this evening, the application doesn't sort of stand on its own because there is an element of common land to be overcome. And so they would still be in the process of having to overcome a change in the registration. But without going on any further, I'm afraid that I too will feel, or I do feel, that I need to sort of vote against the officers on this particular application. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Byam.
The officers are edging to get them to speak, but nevertheless, well, the short answer to all this is, of course, it's it's up to the officers to follow the rules that they've been given to follow, and it's up to us to put our judgment on particular issues if we disagree with the rules as they are betrayed. And I think this is one where clearly we must disagree and approve this application. If we go back to the first application we had this evening, it was a lot of of commercial space. If we go back forty years, and I can't go back that far in terms of Catersham Lane, but I think there was quite an industrial area. And over the years, we've lost and lost and lost. RFD, for instance, used to manufacture all sorts of things down there. I'm not quite sure who else was there. The only reason I know about RFD is because an old friend of mine used to work there, and he was a sales director, I think, or something for RFD. But the this area, Waverley and indeed Surrey to a degree, are bleeding businesses and especially engineering businesses. This one seems to be perfect. It's it's going on the right track. It follows a number of other companies that are not necessarily in Waverley, but in Guildford there are companies dealing with motor racing of various types, although I know one area that they are, they have been using, I think, is now up for redevelopment for housing, and that's at Broadford Park, I think, where various big names were there. And I don't know whether they've all moved out yet, but there's certainly intention that they should move out and therefore become residential. We should cherish engineering, and indeed, I'm not quite sure how many other people got, but we, I certainly got a a set of drawings, some much more illumination drawings than what we have here, which displayed, together with an explanation on the company and and to 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 follow on from councillor Nick Holder's comments about the size of the company. They did explain that there were a number of of extra employees working there in a range of ways. So I don't know whether anybody else received that information. Perhaps I just received it as as vice chairman, but whatever. Okay, you had it. So I, overall, I I support this application and and wish them well.
Thank you. I've got a couple more, several more that wish to speak. Do the officers want to interject at this point? Yes, please, Steve.
Yes, thank you, Chairman. I'm I'm getting the temperature of the room. And and given that there is a potentially an overtion officer recommendation, I just want to take us back a little bit to basics, if I can, in terms of how you apply yourself to green belt policy and and some of the other considerations that you've had in play. The essential test with the green belt is the impact of development on its openness, not whether it's pretty or not, but the test is in terms of openness. And as officers, we've reached the conclusion that the increased scale of the development now proposed will affect the openness of the green belt, it's a larger building on on the site. That's a view we've reached. If, as a committee, you take the view that there's been no impact on openness, then the impact on the green belt has effectively been dealt with. If you concur with the officers that this is a larger building and it will have an impact on openness, but there are very special circumstances that justify that, and those might be the enhancement to the character of the site, and it might be the employment considerations you've been talking of, then you express it in in those terms. So when considering what your decision is going to be and the reasons you give for it, there are two stages to to cross, if you like. Number one is, what impact is there on the green belt in terms of its openness? That's the reason why the land has been washed over as green belt. If you feel there is an impact on openness, but that's outweighed by very special circumstances, that's the call we make. If you feel that there's no impact on openness, then you explain why, and it stops there. I hope Catherine's more of an expert on green belt, been doing it longer than me. But is that fair? Yeah, fine, thank you. I hope that helps.
Thank you, Steve. Councillor Follows.
Yeah, I just wanted to to say, I don't know how much of it is our remit to evaluate the business case of an individual business that's putting in this sort of application. I think that's their, at the end of the day, that is their problem, and we're just here to evaluate the requests they've made. I would actually say, I think we're moving, I think we should possibly move to a vote, considering what the officers have just said to us, unless anybody else is obviously wanting to speak. Thank you.
I have a couple more that wish to speak. Councillor, Peter Martin, sorry.
Thank you. Just on councillor Holder's concerns with employment, like the vice chairman, I received a letter from Mathwall, which I was very happy to receive and to to get the extra detail, which talks about the increase in employment, talks about the number of people that they employ now, eight people flexing up to twelve in the last two years. Their growth plan seeks to expand the business and and look for additional degree qualified engineers and so on and so forth. So I think we have here quite exciting, an exciting proposition, which guards and protects and enhances employment opportunities in this area. And it's very sad that we've seen, that we see so many commercial operations disappearing and being replaced by housing. I think here we have an example where it's the other way around, where we see an expansion of a commercial enterprise. Now, going back to the points that have just been made, my feeling in terms of openness is, yeah, there is some impact, but I don't think it's that substantial. And I do believe that the circumstances that we see here with an enhanced character and with the really, in what I view as a really employment, a really important employment potential. And I think that's very important in this area. We have to protect jobs, and we shouldn't just be a dormitory in this area. And I think that is a really important point as far as I'm concerned, and I think outweighs any concerns that I might have concerning the slight impact on the green belt. And I would just simply say again that I will be wanting to see this application approved. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Upton.
Thank you, Chair. Having seen the site this afternoon in passing, there's a gate to the rear where that brown pathway seems to be. Just a general inquiry, is that a public right of way? Because it seems to extend in up to the other road that runs towards the village. Is it, is it a public right of way or am I assuming it belongs to the property? Or do we need to protect it as a public right of way?
It is a public right of way, and it's already protected.
That's what I mean. So it's been maintained.
Yeah. It's been maintained, yeah. Sorry, Alex, did you wish to comment?
Thank you, Chairman. I would just say that's that's access to the common, Thursley Common to the north west. Let me just show you, we'll go back to the block plan. So yeah, this is just access to the common. There's right of way, there's a public footpath to the south of the site here. Yeah, and and opposite, there's a right of way over here as well, but this is just access to the common. Yes, please say. Thank you, Chairman.
Staggering distance of the three horseshoes, Bob.
Exactly.
Members, are you happy that we move on to the recommendation? Right, so the recommendation is that permission be refused for the reasons set out on the update sheet. All those in favour of that recommendation? And against? Thank you. So can I have a proposal that we have a revised recommendation, that the application be granted? And the, yes, I was coming to that, I need the recommendation first, thank you. Councillor Peter Martin to propose and councillor Stephen Reynolds to second. And reasons, please.
I would put forward the reasons that there is, I don't know whether we can quite get away with this, there clearly is a little bit of an impact on the green belt, but I don't think it's substantial. So acknowledge that there is a a small impact on the green belt, but that the the special circumstances, A, with an enhanced character, which would follow the approval of this application and it being built. which would follow the approval of this application and it being built, and the beneficial impact of employment potential outweighs any potential harm that there might be with the greenbelt.
Thank you. councillor Tom Martin.
I'm happy to support that. Do we, as a committee, need to come up with a list of proposed conditions? And if so, might the officers help in terms of some of the standard conditions that ought to be put on, given that we are now looking to approve this application?
Certainly. I wonder, is there also, as I've seen before, site-specific benefits being quoted? That to help an existing employer to expand, is that something we could put in as a reason? Or should we stick with the fact that as a committee, we don't consider the impact on the greenbelt? Catherine.
If I may, chairman. I think you would be on safer ground going forward and in the interests of protecting your decision-making in the future, of reaching a conclusion that, from the debate I've heard, you accept that there will be an impact on openness. Therefore, you cannot say that the application is compliant with the requirements of greenbelt policy, but that there are very special circumstances. I think that would, in my opinion, be a much safer reason. And that's what I'm taking from the debate, is that you recognise the impact, but that those employment benefits outweigh that harm. I think perhaps relying on the individual, again, is slightly risky. But acknowledging that this is an existing employment site, regardless of who occupies that site, I think is a legitimate reason for you to reach that conclusion. Thank you, chairman.
Thank you, Catherine. Very helpful. And conditions, have you got a... Alex.
Thank you, chairman. Yes, a list of proposed conditions, so be compliance with the submitted plans. So we'd like to see a submission and approval of the materials to be used, the external materials to be used in the buildings. There's some recommended conditions from the environmental health department, which were set out within the report. Similarly with the Natural England conditions as well. And lastly, the county highways authority conditions, which were set out in the update sheet. We'd also, standard conditions, we'd like to see some details of the finished ground levels, just judging on the uneven sites, being as some of the ground slopes away quite considerably. Essentially a condition to maintain the premises within the same use class. Essentially a restriction on the hours of the operation of the business. And then likely, lastly, some details of the boundary treatments, particularly those to be used to the rear of the site here, where there's going to be some substantial engineering operations to make way for the additional parking spaces. Similarly here as well. Yes, that's everything. Thank you very much, chairman.
Was that nine?
Sorry, thank you, chairman. Nine, I listed nine, but I think within the county highway authority conditions, there was four listed. And similarly, within the environmental health thing, we have two or three.
If you could work out a total number, I'd just like to go to councillor Tom Martin and councillor Peter Martin, who both wish to speak to this.
I was simply going to mention that, again, page 71, Natural England's comments, no objection, but it did say subject to conditions. And I will bow to the officers' better knowledge than I of the specific policies that that relates to. But I wonder if we do need to have something that captures what Natural England wish to achieve through their conditions. I think it would be remiss of us not to acknowledge that.
I think you did mention Natural England, didn't you, as one of the conditions?
Yes, so I think, yes, if you want a bit more detail, I said there were two conditions recommended from Natural England, should they be required, one regarding a sustainable drainage system and also a submission of a construction and environmental management plan. And just to explain how the construction activities will be undertaken to avoid any detrimental impacts on the SPA to the north. And then also whilst I hear the conditions recommended from the environmental health, there were three of those. So two from Natural England, three from environmental health and four from the Surrey Highway Authority. Thank you, chairman.
Give me a total number, Alex. Conditions, one, two. There were nine, but some of them had more than one item to it. Amy added up to 16. Any advance on 16? Councillor Bayham would wish to speak.
Yes, one of the conditions that they've put forward was hours of operation. Are we talking about hours of operation for construction or hours of operation as a business? I don't agree if it's hours of operation for the business in that there's probably no, it's an established business, probably with no restrictions whatsoever on their hours. And in the type of business they're in, there may well be peak periods where they've got problems in meeting a deadline for the construction of a vehicle for use at Goodwood or wherever it might be. And therefore, they should be free to use, especially in this isolated position as it is.
Fourteen, okay. So, members, we have a revised recommendation that, subject to conditions one to fourteen just discussed, permission be granted. All those in favour?
Twelve, then.
And against?
One.
Right, so. Yes, so the second recommendation is to grant permission. Thank you, members. Safe journey home.